All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Order of Business November 10th, 2022, Regular Meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council. And right now it's 6:01 PM. Madam Clerk, please take roll call.
Yes, Dave Abdallah.
Here.
Hassan Ahmad.
Here.
Moby Doom.
Here.
Nancy Breyer.
Here.
Robert Coniston is absent. Ray Muscat is absent. Tom Wenzel.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have a question?
Okay, thank you very much, Madam Clerk.
You're welcome.
And thank you for all you did during elections on Tuesday. Appreciate it. Uh, next up is the Pledge of Allegiance. Um, originally, I was gonna have our Councilman Tom Wenzel, but with it being the birthday of the Marines today, I'm gonna have the grandfather of our, God rest his soul, little Joey, lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Phil Smith.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Um, in addition to this, originally, I was gonna have Councilman Tom Wenzel lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, but he had a statement that he wanted to make. Go ahead, Councilman.
Thank you, Council Chair. Uh, as the Council Chair mentioned, today is the, uh, today's November 10th, 2022. It's the 247th birthday of the United States Marine Corps. Uh, it holds a special place in my heart, the Marine Corps does. My father was a World War II combat veteran, and my brother was a Vietnam combat veteran. And, um, it was nice to be considered to start the pledge. And I also like to mention on this birthday, um, someone else in here, it's Marine Corps veteran Bill Bozzi. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, for your service. Next up is Agenda Approval. Council Chair. Councilman Bedun.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the second amended agenda of the Regular Meeting of November 10th, 2022, as submitted.
Seconded.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Bedun and seconded by Councilman Ahmad. Is there any discussion on that? Okay. Um, no discussion, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is Approval of the Minutes. Council Chair. Councilman Bedun.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the minutes of the Regular Meeting of October 25th, 2022, as outlined in 4A.
Seconded.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Bedun and seconded by Councilman Ahmad. Is there any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is Public Hearings and Comments on Agenda Items Only. So you will have two minutes. Please state your name, street you live on, and the city you live in. Please don't miss the city, because I'll get in trouble with the clerk's office. And you will have two minutes on anything on the agenda item. So I will, Madam Clerk, I will start first with, uh, Zoom, just in case. Is there anybody that you see on Zoom? I don't see nobody personally. Nobody? Okay. So next up, anybody in the audience have any comments on an agenda item? Okay, seeing none. Uh, thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Next up is Fund Transfers and Current Claims.
Council Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve current claims 6-1 through 6-51 as submitted.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Ahmad and seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Is there any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is Item Number 9, Reports from City Officials. Council Chair. Councilman Bedun.
Uh, I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council authorize the Comptroller to amend the building and engineering department budget to reflect an increase of $15,000 for overtime account, uh, number 101, 371-709.000, with the amount to be transferred from the general fund as outlined in 9A.
Support.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Bedun and seconded by Councilman Ahmad. Is there any discussion on that? Uh, just, just a quick comment on this. Uh, one of the main reasons, I mean, there's been multiple reasons as to why they needed a little bit more overtime, but the biggest reason is our city's gone back to inspecting rental properties on a regular basis every three years. So it's, and created a little bit more of a burden um, on the city inspectors, and that's why they need a little bit more overtime. So, just as an FYI on that. Any other discussions on that? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is Item 9B, Chief of Staff Hernandez. Council Chair. Councilman Bedun.
Uh, I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the proposal for funding scout services between the city and Waitrim. In addition, authorize the mayor, comptroller, or clerk to sign the necessary warrants in the treasurer to issue a one-time payment of $26,000 from the GL account number 101-200-818.000 and $26,000 from GL account number 592-536-818.000 as outlined in 9B.
Support.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Bedun and seconded, uh, by Councilman Ahmad. Is there any discussion on that? Council Chair. Uh, Councilman Bedun. I, I, I read through this. I saw that there's gonna be, uh, so will this be, can somebody kind of break this down a little bit to me on, on what this is exactly? Maybe Mariana can?
I saw that it was a $56,000 lump sum upfront. Um, and then this would be potentially working with grants and helping us to move forward with that? Okay. Your mic, your mic might be off. Yep.
That'd be disconnected.
We're good? All right, um, I know she's, yeah, yeah, that's fine. Um, you, you can just take Tom's spot. Chief of Staff Hernandez.
It's on, it's on.
Oh, it's on? Okay. Uh, Councilman Tom Wenzel, you gonna bill us for this, or we're good?
Elections were here a few days ago. Um, all right, yes, so this would be a contract with Waitrim for two years for the total cost of $52,000, one lump sum payment for two years. So right now, the state of Michigan is seeing a lot of grant funding available through various sources, from Eagle, FEMA, Spark. So there is a, a really large amount of grants that are coming up that the deadlines for applications are next year. As you know, the person that was doing our grant management before has moved now solely to the community and economic development. So he's focusing on a lot of those funds, as well as the FEMA houses. So he's already kind of busy with all of those things, and we think that Waitrim would also be able to help us with the larger grants, because they already know our city, and they know what we qualify for, which that's the more important thing. Um, instead of having someone here spend a lot of time trying to research what we qualify for, what we don't, when the deadlines are coming up, et cetera, they would kind of filter all of that information from us and give us a breakdown of, here are the steps and the things that you need to do in order to apply for this grant. They will gather it for us and submit the applications. That way, um, we meet those deadlines, which are coming up rather soon.
Thank you.
And, and basically, what that's gonna do is that's gonna bring in a lot of money into the city, hopefully, for little or no pay, so. Now, is this, Mariana, if you don't mind me asking, um, how's that any different? Remember the gentleman, the lobbyist, that, uh, we met with myself, yourself, the mayor here?
Council Chair.
Yes.
This guy is bringing us money, grants. Uh, the lobbyist actually goes on lobbies for money, so it's not guaranteed. You know, he just lobbies.
So I mean, I still, we could still think about bringing in lobbyists,
but at this point, this person is actually applying for grants.
Okay.
Instead of lobbying, uh,
Different services.
lawmakers in the state.
Right. Okay.
And the, and the good news is here, Council Chair, is, uh, if I may, uh, we got two years to exceed $52,000 grants, but with the help of, uh, Waitrim, and it doesn't cost us basically anything.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's gonna pay itself at the end of the day. As you can see, last year, we presented a lot of NOIs that we're applying for right now, so that's the notice of intent. Um, so again, it's about 10 grants, about a million dollars each, that they're gonna be helping us put those applications together and follow the process of application reporting, et cetera.
Amazing.
Council Chair. Uh, yes, Councilman Wenzel.
A couple of things. Where's this, where's the money coming from, the $52,000?
Uh, so I split it in half. Uh, so $26,000 would come from the general fund, and $26,000 will come from water and sewer. A big portion of the grants that we're applying for are for Eagle, so it's for water projects, particularly in relation to our flooding situation along the Equest Creek and the Rouge River. So I feel like that would be a fair way of paying for those grants.
Okay, um, well, a couple of things there. I mean, our water rates are skyrocketing, and now we're taking, we, we had a water, special meetings on the water rates, and the money we came up with was what we absolutely needed. Now we're spending it on, giving it to a consultant firm. Um, and $52,000, you know, I feel about our employees and how low they're paid. I'd rather give critical employees bonuses instead of $50,000. I think this is kind of like a slap in the face of our directors saying that they don't know how to look for grants. Now, in this proposal, it says that we pay for every grant that is found, and we, okay, they charge us an additional $3,000 to do the paperwork. Now, I'm not against that at all, because I know it's very extensive doing the paperwork. Um, our directors should be able to find the grants, the things that they want. They know what they want, say, hey, I, I need, I need a grant for, for this, and they Google it, and I've Googled it. You'd be surprised what you find on Google. And then you say, boy, those grants are available. Hey, Waitrim, you know, apply for this grant for me. It's three, only $3,000. This, this cost is $52,000 plus $3,000 for every grant they submit.
So 10, 10, 10 grants would be an additional $30,000.
20 grants, I do the math, it's $3,000 for every grant. We can do the work, our directors can do the work. I've talked to several of them. They say they know how to look for grants. I've talked to several of them. And, uh, I think this is a slap in the face to them, and it's a waste of money that we could be putting toward our valued employees at Dearborn Heights.
Council Chair. Okay, just make, hold on, just a quick side. Do you wanna answer that, or you want?
I didn't hear a question.
Yeah, it was a statement. Okay, go ahead.
Council Chair, and just to say, like, you know, at the end of the day, Councilman, I understand, but not everything that the city is putting forward to working on has to turn back to saying, well, we're not paying our employees, we're not paying our employees. Ultimately, that makes every decision wrong. If we're able to get in more grants, bringing in more money to the city, then more things are accessible. It allows a surplus of money to be able to come in. And this is just, and I understand your frustration.
No, I'm not frustrated. I'm just saying, you understand what this is. They're, they, they, they don't know what we want. Our directors know what they want, okay? And, and if our billing director says, hey, I need a grant for, you know, uh, some office equipment or something like that, he Googles what he needs office, and he says, here's three grants. He calls Waitrim up, he says, hey, these are three grants I want you to, you know, write proposals for.
In the contract, it states that they're gonna be sitting down with police and fire, the mayor's office.
Do they have experience with police and fire grants?
Yes.
Waitrim does?
Yes.
I talked, really?
This is not Waitrim, the engineering part of Waitrim? This is the funding scout portion of it?
I just still think it's, you know, giving them $3,000 to write the grant, processing the grant is fine, but giving them $56,000 is not fine. That's our taxpayer, that's part of our water budget that we, we have the highest water rates in anywhere around. And now we're taking that money instead of putting it toward the water, even though some of our Eagle projects, it's a small amount of them. And we've been getting grants requests from our directors for a long time. What's, why, what are they doing wrong? If they're, if they're, if they can't do their job, what are they doing in their, that position? It's like saying, you guys can't, you don't know your job? You can't find your own grants? Well, you know, we're gonna find someone else.
Okay.
May I say something? I'm sorry.
Just, just a quick second, uh, Council, Council, go ahead, go ahead.
Oh, it's okay. I just wanted to clarify again. Grant writing is a very specific skill that you need to learn how to do it. You need to spend a lot of time reading documents that are 200 pages long worth of policies and procedures on how to apply for those grants. We had a grant manager last year. The council saw the value in that. Again, that person has transitioned to a different position. This is a one-in-a-lifetime opportunity to have this amount of funding available for the cities of Michigan. Um, to clarify the question about the grants, the majority of them are actually in the water department. As I mentioned, we already submitted five NOIs, which are worth $5 million if they get awarded, which will ultimately, at the end of the day, save taxpayer money, because those are all going to be for projects that we are mandated to do, like the three additional CSO projects that we have. If we don't get these grants, we don't have another alternative other than selling bonds, like we did a few years ago.
Council Chair.
We're trying to ultimately save money for the residents.
Everybody's missing my point. Sure, writing grants is hard, that's why I said, let them write the grants for $3,000. But you just said, you, you just mentioned all these grants that were, are coming up. We got them. We didn't have to hire a company to get those. We did those on our own. We don't need to pay someone to do the, the work that our directors know how to do.
Okay, so what you may wanna do, Councilman, if you checked with, for example, Lisa in the fire department, and I've spoken with her, and I've researched this grant writing stuff with multiple, multiple people.
It's not grant writing.
Okay, but grant writing, grant finding, the whole nine yards. It's one of the most complex things that you can do.
No, it's not.
And if, if you look at, for example, the city of Dearborn, the city of Dearborn hired a full-time, and if I'm not mistaken, don't quote me on the number, but I think it's like $100 and some thousand dollars a year for somebody to go look for grants, find grants, and of course, uh, continue with the process. So whatever money that's brought in, the Chief of Staff mentioned 5 million. Even if it brings in $100,000, you know, more than pay for itself. So it is not something that a director or a councilman can do. It's not, it's not as simple as you think it is, because otherwise, you look at.
Finding grants?
See, finding grants is not just Googling, you know, get me a grant on this. It's not that simple.
It is.
At least everything I've been told about it. Okay, thank you. Anybody else with comments on this?
Okay, hearing none. Mo, thank you, Chief of Staff. Motion made by Councilman Bedun and seconded by Councilman Ahmad. Uh, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, uh, Madam Clerk, can please take roll call?
Dave Abdallah.
Yes.
Hassan Ahmad.
Yes.
Moby Doom.
Yes.
Nancy Breyer.
Yes.
Tom Wenzel.
No.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Uh, motion carried on 9B, Chief of Staff Hernandez's proposal for funding scout services. Next up is Item 9C, Fire Chief Brogan, permission to pay for the rescue squad. Council Chair. Uh, Councilwoman Breyer, please.
All right. I'd like to make motion that the Dearborn Heights City Council authorize payment for the rescue squad purchase previously approved at the January 25th, 2022, City Council meeting. In addition, authorize the mayor and comptroller or clerk to sign the necessary warrants and the treasurer to issue payment from capital outlay account number 101-335-981.000 per Fire Chief Brogan. Communication dated October 25th, 2022, as outlined in 9C.
Support.
Okay, motion made by Councilwoman Breyer and supported by Councilman Bedun. Any discussion on that? Okay, hearing none. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is IT Director Cooper, Next Request Service Agreement. Item 9D.
Council Chair.
Okay, Councilman Ahmad.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the agreement between the city and next request to aid in the management and tracking of FOIA requests, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the agreement on behalf of the city. The attached proposal provides the service free until July 1st, 2023, upon which we are invoiced for $6,291 for the next year of service, and $8,388 yearly if continued service is requested. Furthermore, provided the mayor also authorizes any such payment as necessary expense, the City Council authorizes warrants to be issued and signed by the mayor and comptroller or clerk, and the treasurer to issue payment without prior authorization by City Council of the specific warrant and payment as permitted by and consistent with City Charis Section 8.9, as outlined in 9-D.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Ahmad and seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Is any discussion on that? Council Chair. Uh, Councilman Bedun first, and Councilman Wenzel.
My question to this is, are we receiving an extensive amount of FOIAs to the point where we're gonna be spending $8,300 a month, I mean, a year? Uh, I see that it's given us a free child till July 1st of 2023, and then we would be paying $6,291. And then the yearly if we continue to work with them, pay $8,388. My question is, uh, I believe Mariana does our, is our FOIA coordinator. Uh, are we receiving enough FOIAs so that this is offsetting? Is it necessary? Do we have an, maybe a rough estimate of what we're receiving throughout the year? And it's, and it's just for my own sanity.
Okay, yes, they have been increasing significantly for the last three years. I think the public is more aware that it is easy to FOIA a city, and one of the tools that I like the most about this software is that it allows you to invoice for those FOIAs, uh, in the same platform, which is something that currently we're doing separately. Um, we're calculating those fees and then sending them another email, and then they come and pay it at the treasurer's office. This would save them the trip, so they can pay directly on the platform. And, uh, it also speeds up a lot of time with redacting of those FOIAs, because the software itself has redacting tools that are very necessary, in particular to our police department. Uh, the police department has requested an additional, uh, FOIA, um, software for the last two years. We were waiting to see which one would be compatible with their body cameras, because it also allows for editing some of that footage. And this is the software that, um, works best with the current tools that we have.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Councilman Wenzel, you had a question?
Yeah, um, Director Cooper, can you give us, you know, a brief, you know, synopsis of what this, what's this gonna do for us?
Sure, it's, uh, it provides a portal for the public, um, or ourselves if we need to submit into it. It helps with the tracking, the logging of the date and the time that all goes into it. Um, what it would, you know, a sense do is it would go to Ms. Mariana, and then she would be able to create the workflow to go to the property department to meet the needs of the, of the FOIA request, of whatever information needs. There is, um, it meets all the security compliances also, so that when we need to give the FOIA information to the requister, um, it's secure, it meets HIPAA compliance, if that is needed. Um, so that they can get it right from the email. They don't need to come in, you know, to get the, the information that they're requesting. Uh, it provides the ability, again, for anybody that has permissions in the system to the proper redacting, whether it's a 100-page document and we need to now redact certain information. It, it has the AI built into it to help with it. Right now, it is all manually done, and that is very, very, um, time-consuming with that. Um, one of the big aspects of it is the, the workflow of it of tracking where, when, and who needed to do what part of a FOIA to make sure nothing is missed. Where if someone's fallen behind, fallen behind or didn't do what they need to do, it will send them an automatic reminder to say, hey, you had this FOIA. We all get busy in fortunate jobs, but you still got this FOIA to meet to make sure we meet the needs of the public, to meet the needs of the FOIA.
Is this, is this gonna work on all FOIAs requested by, throughout the city?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Now, the, uh.
Neighborhood, I must say, neighboring cities, a lot of the neighboring cities have already been implementing this for a couple of years now.
Now, will this, will this help? I know you said you'll email the requister. Um, is there any other benefits to the person requesting the FOIA on this?
Um, I think Ms. Mariana's, uh, Ms. Hernandez said it the best is where also the invoicing of it, where they could actually pay online again, not having to come in, uh, to do that. Um, from my talking to everyone that's involved in FOIA, um, that's a, we kinda lack on that, that's been a requirement, I'll say, lacking. It's been a request to let them be able to pay, you know, online.
Will they be able to track their, their progress of their FOIA?
Exactly, yes, they will. Yep. They'll know what stage it is, you know, in there, um, and where they're, where they're at in the process.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Council Chair.
Councilman.
Thank you, sir. Um, I love this, I'm all about moving the city to the 21st century, and, um, my, my concern was exactly like Councilman Bedun about if we're receiving enough FOIAs to pay for this. Uh, I understand it's, um, $6,291 a year. Is that paid lump sum, or is it monthly?
That's, that's a lump sum.
Lump sum.
Yep, we're getting a startup discount of it, because, uh, the, the parent company of this, we already used some of their services some other way, so they gave us, um, initial, you know, eight months free and a reduc, a reduction of pricing for the first year.
So this is from now till July, is this a trial period, or this is?
From now to July is free. And then the $6,300, whatever, would give us the next year. So basically, we'd be getting that pricing for 18 months.
No, I understand, so if we don't like it from now till July, can we cancel? Or we're stuck for another year?
Nope, nope, we can cancel it.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Director. Uh, motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Is there, let's go ahead and take that trouble. Uh, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Uh, next item on the agenda is Treasurer Hicks Clayton, Quarterly Investment of Funds Report. Council Chair. Uh, Councilman Bedun.
Uh, just before, a quick interruption, uh, to make sure that the clerk makes note for the record that Councilman is here, thank you.
record that Councilman is here, thank you, and then I'll go ahead and read this. At the Dearborn Heights City Council, received note and filed the Quarterly Investment of Funds Report for July, August, and September of two thousand and twenty-two, the first quarter of the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three as outlined in nine E.
Support. Okay, motion made by Councilman Baydun and supported by Councilman Conston. Any discussion on that?
Councilor Chair.
Councilman?
Can we have the Treasurer get, step up and tell us if there's anything surprising or bad or good about, about this?
Well, if anything, it's good.
Okay.
And if you, again, my name is Lisa Hicks Clayton, I'm the Treasurer. And thank you, Councilmen, for asking the question. But when you look at your report and if you compare it to past reports, you would see a significant difference as far as your rates, which is nice because you'll see some substantial gains that we haven't seen in the course of well over a year. So that's one of the improvements you're going to see, but that's because we see what's, you know, happening with inflation, with what the feds are doing, right? So that's impacting this. But in this case, it's been beneficial for the city, for our investments. One thing I will tell you that a lot of the investments, I worked closely with Morgan Stanley on these, as well as I earned my Certified Public Finance Investment Manager certification this summer from a national and international organization. And what we have found that we talked about and strategized that we would have these timed out or maturing in December because we know there's going to be another bump in the interest rates. So that way, we can time it accordingly and maybe gain a little bit more improved interest rates and try to do some longer-term investments when the time is right. However, what's really important to remember is that all investments are regulated and we must be fully compliant with Public Act Twenty, which we are. And by presenting this report to you quarterly, that's how, that's part of the requirement. So we actually see some improvement and growth in that field.
Thank you.
So it's been really, it's way better than it has been. So, but we, we actually, I met with somebody today from Michigan class about this, and we see, you know, we know it's going to bottom out, it's going to flatten out eventually, right? We're looking at early spring for that. So we're being very mindful, right, of how long we invest and how fluid, you know, you want things to be fluid, right, and available, and it has to be low risk for municipalities. It's all related to that Public Act Twenty. So I hope that answers your question, Councilman.
Thank you, you did. Thank you so much.
Anything else?
Councilman Ahmad.
Yeah, Councilor, thank you, Madam Treasurer. I have a question about the Comerica PEG account. How come there's no change in that one? That's not being invested?
What you're, yeah, it's, excuse me. The PEG account is eight hundred thousand invested?
No, no, the third, I would say the third box from the top, it says Comerica.
Under corporate fund, right?
Under PEG fund, the third one.
You're looking for PEG fund, right? So there is eight hundred thousand.
No, no, it's like four oh six.
The very first line, the four oh six is what's in the account, right? That's available right now for us to, like when you had projects done here with the studio, that money we needed available to pay for those invoices and things like that. That money continues to come into us at different times from your cable bills, taxes. So you're going to see that number increase, but eventually, based on, what I do is I talk to the department heads, and I say, let's talk about your quarterly forecast for funds. How much can I afford to invest right now and for how long and when do you need it? When do you need access to the money and how much? So that one is left there until we're ready and we know that we don't necessarily need it for how long, and then we'll invest it when it's with, because it's restricted, it's going to stay with the eight hundred thousand that you see that's already invested. Because keep in mind, the way this is set up, and when you look at your investment report, it's broken down by restricted accounts. Those monies, those funds never intermingle or cross each other, so.
And Treasurer?
Yes.
Looking at this between the restricted and the unrestricted, of all my years on council, this is the shortest two papers that I've seen. So is there accounts missing here that we don't have as a part of our package here? Because looking at this, there's just way less funds than we have available.
Comerica, PEG, major-
So this is like a two-pager or one page on both sides, if you want to call it?
Yeah. You're usually about two and a half, this is about three, or two, so it's-
So is there any?
Yep, and your water, your water account's your biggest-
Is there any accounts missing?
No, no. Your water account is your biggest investment, a little under two million, or twelve million, excuse me. And Tifa's usually the end, so library, confiscated drugs, building, those are the CDs. I, no, I don't recognize anything.
And we've got Tifa, we've got the water, we've got Water and Sewer Fund.
The library.
Our general fund, taxes, and library. But I know there's more funds than that.
You've got Major Street on there. You see Major Street, PEG Fund, Local Street, and then you've got your non-major government funds, that's going to be library, confiscated drugs, and building, those are actually, those two are in CDs right now, more of a longer-term CD. Actually, it matures in December.
Okay. I could go back and pull an old one just to compare, but something seems to be missing. Is there any way that you could look into that, maybe?
I can run to my office and grab it because it's on my computer.
Okay.
I can't bring my computer, but I'll run to the office.
Yeah, if you, if you, actually, if we could send this back to Treasurer, maybe send us an updated one, and we could just bring it back to, um, note and file at the next council meeting.
Yeah, yep. And make sure we'll take a look because what I sent to the clerk is what is actually, you know, what I have saved because I keep those for the audit, but I am happy to do so, maybe, I don't know. I'll take a look.
If you don't mind, could refer this one back to the Treasurer's office and maybe not vote on it today, just-
Are we, are we even voting? We're not even voting on this.
It's a received note. It's required by Public Act Twenty that you do receive a note.
Would you table it?
Yeah, we're just, we're sending it back to administration.
If I can make a suggestion not to table, unless you, just refer it back?
Refer it. Yeah. And then she'll bring it to the next council meeting, we'll approve it then.
I'm happy to do so. Thank you.
Councilman Breyer?
Yeah. I've noticed that most of these have already matured. Are we reinvesting with the same?
Well, remember, this is a quarterly report.
Okay.
So this is, you're working backwards right now. So you're going from the first quarter. This is a first-quarter report, which is going to be July, August, and September. So that's what, you're not going to see those that mature, like for example, if they mature in October, those aren't going to be on here. You know what I'm saying? That's why you see the dates, that's, it's a period of time.
But we're reinvesting with the same entities?
No, that can change. But what you see on here is for that quarter, and it tells you what the, who the entities are. Yep. Okay.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Thank you very much, Madam Treasurer.
You're welcome.
Next up on the agenda is item eleven A, Mayor Basie Resolution.
Councilor Chair.
You have to vote. Okay, I'm sorry.
First, you have to amend the motion to refer it back.
Correct.
That's what you want.
And the one that made the motion was Councilman Baydun, so you want to go ahead and amend it and refer it back to administration?
Councilor Chair, I'd like to amend my motion and refer it back to the administration.
Okay, all in favor? Yep, yep. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Next up on the agenda is item eleven A, Mayor Basie Resolution, supporting the Michigan Department of Environmental, Great Lakes, and Energy, otherwise known as Eagle, High Water Infrastructure Grant.
Councilor Chair.
Councilwoman Breyer?
I'd like to make a motion that the Dearborn Heights City Council would authorize the city's application for Eagles twenty twenty-three High Water Infrastructure Grant Program and commit to provide a twenty percent local match for the grant awarded. In addition, authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the resolution and authorize the city clerk to provide the resolution in minutes indicating its approval to the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy as outlined in eleven A.
Support. Okay, motion made by Councilwoman Breyer and supported by Councilman Conston. Is there any discussion on that?
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Wenzel?
I'm not sure exactly what, what this does. I guess it gives us the authority to accept a grant. I don't think it gives us anybody the authority to spend the money for the matching, does it?
Councilor Chair. Mayor, go ahead.
That's, if you compare, that's the same, pretty much similar, not the same, similar to the FEMA grant. So the FEMA grant, the government doesn't give us a hundred percent, they give us a percent.
Yep.
So we have to make up the difference. So what this does, something similar. The government's not going to give us the full amount. You know, they're going to obviously give us eighty percent once the grants go through, and we have to pay eight, twenty percent. And with that, you know, in the past, so we have projects that the city never, in the past, I don't know how many years, never applied for grants like these, and the city paid for these, like, to give you an example, the, the LED pipes, you know, the issues that we had several years ago. The city spent millions of dollars on those things, and they never applied for grants. So now we're applying for grants to make sure that we take, we use that, that money to actually pay for things the city needs. We have aging systems in the city. So when we come out here trying to, you know, apply grants, we're trying to help the residents by taking grant money instead of the city paying for it and putting bonds like we've done in the past. You put a bond, twenty million, a bond to pay for something that we might have been able to get part of it as a grant. So that's, you know, this is something the city needs. The government or the entities will give you money, or in this particular Eagle, but, you know, we have to pay proportionally, which is twenty percent.
And ultimately, like you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, it just saves the residents a lot of money from having to pay taxes because at the end of the day, you know, if it's paid out of the city's money, then obviously, it goes right back to the residents. So, good job on that. Okay.
Councilor Chair.
Council, Councilman, so go ahead.
Well, this is, is there a cap? I mean, what, if we get a-
Council Chair.
A hundred million dollar grant, you know, I mean, for every million, it's going to cost us two hundred thousand dollars, right?
So-
Thirty million dollar grant, I mean, is that money we have? Just because we're getting free money, we still have to spend money, you know? Even though it's free, eighty percent's free.
Sure.
It's still money that we don't have. I mean, even though how bad we need a project done.
Councilor Chair.
You know?
But here's, but here's how, there's another way, there's another twist to this as to how you could look at it. So let's just use a hypothetical number. They give us a billion dollars, right? We don't have the two hundred million to give, right? So we don't accept it. But let's just say, let's use hypothetical again. They give us a hundred thousand dollars, so we pay twenty thousand dollars, right? But we get eighty. So how much did we ultimately make for free? Sixty thousand dollars. So there's nothing that eventually, ultimately, will be out of pocket because you only pay twenty percent when you receive it. But at any point, you pay twenty percent and receive back eighty percent, I mean, that's an investment I'll take every day. So if there's any bank out there that will do that for me, I'm in.
Well, they're not going to give you the money, they're giving you money toward-
They're giving you grants.
They're going to pay that, you have to use it for a certain thing. It's not, you're not getting money.
But, but if we didn't have that grant, then we would be paying it out of our funds, which ultimately means out of the residents' taxes.
I understand, yeah. But I mean, is there, is there a cap on this at all?
I'm sorry?
Is there a cap or anything on this?
It says fourteen point two five, Councilman.
Fourteen?
It's, it's in the letter if you read it.
Yeah, I seen that fourteen point two five.
It's the fourth line, it's not three hundred million. It says fourteen point two five million.
That's the grant, that's the grants that are, that's the, no, that's not what we pay. That would be the grants that are, that they're going to release.
Yeah, yeah.
That's, that's, that's not even what I was talking about.
And Council Chair, we got to bring anything, we got to bring it in front of council for approval. So we're not, this is just to prove this, but anytime we spend anything, it has to come in front of you guys anyway.
And like I mentioned, Councilman, no matter what it is, whether it's a hundred, five hundred million, or three billion, we still have to accept that grant. So if we don't accept it, we don't pay nothing.
Well, yeah. I'm not against this, I was just wanting to know more specifics about it, if there was any kind of cap or how, how was, how it was going. I'll agree to this, but I'm just, I'm unsure on all the details on it.
I got you, I got you. All right, so was there somebody else who would make a comment?
Yeah, Councilor Chair, just to clarify, it does say release up to fourteen million, so there's not, that's a cap, up to fourteen million, so you might get less than fourteen.
Well, yeah, we're getting a lot of-
But not to us only, that's too out.
We'd be lucky to get a million out of that.
So, so, Mr. Mayor, where, where would the twenty percent be coming from? Like what, what account in the city?
Okay, again, we're not spending anything with this. Whatever projects we have that we got to get, you guys going to see it, and it's going to tell you which account is coming out of, then you guys approve it at the end of the day. So we don't know yet, you know, which, which one we got to be using, which money we're going to be getting.
We're just agreeing to match.
But whatever funding we get, you know, you're going to have it on your resolution, you know, X amount of money is going to come out of a particular fund. I mean, you guys going to see all of it.
Is this, is this something we have to do legally or something, or what is this?
Yes, we have to. We have to have it done by, for next week.
This document has to be signed legally to accept the grant?
We have to accept it so that the Eagle will know that we're willing to pay the twenty percent for them to give us money.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. So again, motion made by Councilwoman Breyer, seconded by Councilman Conston. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm going to vote no because I'm not really a hundred percent sure on this, and I'm not going to vote yes on something I'm not a hundred percent sure on. No.
Okay, Madam Clerk, can please take your call?
Again, you know, I'm going to reiterate this. You know, the city hall is open, you know, all day Thursday, you know, you guys can call and ask the questions instead of wasting, you know, the, the residents' time. You guys can call and ask any question, you know, my, the office is always open. So I don't know why we have to question certain things at a council meeting. You know, we've talked about this for years. You know, if you guys have a question, anything, tough questions, call us. You know, you can come to the city hall, you know, it's not closed, you know, it's open. So you guys can come and ask us, or you can make phone calls. There's no reason to come in here and go through it item by item and wasting everybody's time here. I mean, you know, we're here for you guys. You guys tell us the best way to do this.
With all, with all due respect, Mr. Mayor, this is what the residents want to hear. They want, they, they don't want just this rubber stamping everything, they want to hear the specifics.
We're not rubber-stamping, it calls the chair, everything is in here. If you read the whole thing, it spells it out. It's not a rubber stamp.
Okay. All right, so Madam Clerk, can please take your call?
Yes, Dave Abdullah?
Yes.
Hassan Ahmad?
Yes.
Moe Baydun?
Yes.
Nancy Breyer?
Yes.
Robert Conston?
Yes.
Tom Wenzel?
No.
Motion carries. Five for you.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item thirteen, Business License Renewals.
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Ahmad?
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council renew the business licenses for Bellagio Banquet LLC at twenty-three nine hundred West Warren, Liver Noise Motorsports and Engineering LLC at twenty-five hundred South Gully, Mexican Fiesta at twenty-four three ten Ford Road, and Walkers Speakeasy at eighty-seven oh one North Beach Daily as outlined in thirteen dash eight.
Support. Okay. Motion made by Councilman Ahmad and seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Any discussion on that? Councilor Chair. Councilman Baydun, go ahead.
I seen, when I was reading through my packet, that there was one of the businesses that was on a payment plan. It was the first one I've seen.
Walkers Speakeasy.
Okay, Walkers Speakeasy. I didn't really want to say the business out there out loud, but what do we do in this scenario? I know, I know that they're on a, you know, payment plan. Can I get an update maybe from the clerk or the treasurer's, everything? How long have they been on a payment plan?
Should be on the news.
Probably about a year, Councilman, through the chair.
It's, it's on the personal property taxes.
Yes. And at the time of renewal, we check and make sure that they're current on that plan. And if they're not, they wouldn't be issued the license, but they're maintaining the agreement that they originally made with the treasurer's office.
Okay. So for the residents that are here that are not familiar with this, on the personal property taxes, it's just equipment and stuff like that that you have inside your business. It is not your traditional property taxes that we all think of. It's on the actual equipment. So typically, it's a much lesser amount. Okay. Any other questions on this?
That's it, Councilor Chair.
Okay, hearing none. Motion made by Ahmad and seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item number thirteen C, I'm sorry, item thirteen C, Temporary Food Truck Tent Car Business License Application.
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Baydun?
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the temporary food truck tent cart business license application for the Chicken Coop as outlined in thirteen B.
Support.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Baydun, supported by Councilman Ahmad. All in favor, please, I'm sorry, any discussion on this?
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Baydun?
I just wanted to kind of extend, I know the gentleman who is opening up the Chicken Coop in the South End is here today. Their family business has been there for several years. I know the gentleman very well. This, this is a great restaurant, it's a great food truck. I think this is bringing more traditional life. He owns the actual business. Instead of adding an addition and making a restaurant inside that, you know, the gas Instead of adding an addition and making a restaurant inside that, you know, the gas station like you would have seen in the past, he's bringing a mobilized food truck and he's gonna keep it there for, I believe this is, I mean, he doesn't want to be temporary. He'd like to be there for as long as the city allows him.
Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion items on that?
Councilor Chair.
Uh, Councilman Wensel?
Is, is this one that the mobile station?
The BP gas station.
Oh, the BP on, on Beach Daily in Annapolis?
Okay. Okay. Any questions, Councilman?
Okay. Okay. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Because it's gotta be recorded. So if you have a question for somebody specific, let me know, I'll ask them to come up.
Okay. No. Um, I, I was just curious with our ordinance department, they, I, I haven't heard anything, but has there been any issues with the, the chicken coop?
Um, the police department, the, our legal team and administration and clerk's office, and they're comfortable with all the stuff available.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Uh, any other, no, no other discussion items on that? All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Congratulations.
Good luck.
Congratulations. All right. Next item on the agenda is members of the public. First, we're gonna start with, and, and, and councilmen and women. Let's keep these limited, please, or summarize. I, I, we, we're trying to limit as how long the meetings are, so I, I can't have 10 minutes on each item. So limit it as much as you can. So let's start with comments from council members.
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Vaidun, please.
I'll keep it brief. Couple of things here. Congratulations to the Detroit Lions and your fans. Happy birthday to our amazing director, one of the best directors, one of my favorites. I won't say, uh, any other names other than Mr. McCaffrey, so congratulations. Or happy birthday.
Happy one year short of 50.
One year short of 50. My second thing here.
DMH forever.
Councilor Chair, I want to thank our clerk, who's doing a phenomenal job this past election. This has been, it was, it was a great turnout, great victory. I believe, I won't take your shine on there, but it was a great voter turnout there. Um, Councilor Chair, and then I also want to know that I know it's Veterans Day tomorrow, so thank you to everyone. I can see our heroes here. I won't take you guys' shine. Thank you to the mayor for his service. Thank you to all the fallen and all those who served this great country. God bless you guys. Uh, I can tell you, my family and I are extremely appreciative. Thank you to the Councilwoman Tom Wensel's father. Uh, I like, uh, you know, God rest his soul. And thank you, Councilor Chair.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments from council members?
I'd also like to, to comment that Phil Smith is the, uh, Service Person of the Year for Dearborn.
Veteran.
Veteran of the Year. Yes.
Congratulations. Okay. Any other comments from council members? Councilor Chair. All right. Uh, Councilman Conston, then Councilman Wensel.
Thank you, Councilor Chair. I'd also like to thank our clerk, Linsenya, for the great job she did, uh, in this most recent election. And also say happy Veterans Day to all the veterans, including my 96-year-old father, who's a World War II Army Air Corps veteran. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Wensel?
Thank you, Councilor Chair. Um, I'd like to congratulate and show my respect to all the candidates who ran this past election, uh, regardless of the results. I know it's, it's a tough road to, uh, run for any office, and, uh, thank you so much for putting the time and effort into it for our community. You're greatly appreciated. Um, also happy Veterans Day tomorrow. Uh, the family activities, you know, I like to speak about families coming up. Our Parks and Recreation Department have, has several family activities coming up. I'll let the director speak on them if, if she's going to speak on them. If not, you can look at the website. There's several things coming up that are great for the family. And, um, I just want to say how a little bit upset I am about passing the, um, the Wade trim thing. I mean, sure, it's nice to have things, but $52,000, we could have, I mean, we have council members complaining about stump removal that would cost an additional $10,000 or, or different is street sweeping, you know, $52,000. We could put that into our own city and, and give it back to us and let, let our directors continue to, to search for their grants. But I'm, I'm asking that some of the council members change their vote to know on this issue. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Any other council?
Councilor Chair, I also would like to thank, um, Madam Clerk and her team on a great job and, um, congratulation on being Veteran of the Year. Also, I think our honorable mayor, I think, received an award, a award of honor. It's called. So I would like to thank all the veterans, especially the veterans of our city. Honorable mayor, thank you very much for your service, and thank you very much, Councilor Chair.
Thank you. All right. Next up, uh, did you have, you've already announced. Okay. So next up, we have announcements from administration. Mayor?
I've never been speechless in my life just watching these kids. You know, it's, oh my, this is like, I'm speechless, you know? I've never been so speechless in my life, but you guys, it's just made me speechless.
I don't see kids, I see the future here.
There's, you know, these guys are amazing. I mean, thank you so much. You know, this, this means a lot to all the veterans. I'm speechless. I mean, that's, uh, thank you. Thank you. You know, today's Marine Corps birthday. You know, I want to wish all the Marines, you know, happy birthday to all the Marines and all the fallen, you know, Marines that fought, you know, for this country. And obviously, like you said, uh, tomorrow is Veterans Day, and, uh, I'm not a pass. These guys just touch me.
Another round of applause. There you go, man.
Councilor Chair.
I, I, I tell you, I, I've seen it firsthand. I, I talked to you about this before. I seen it myself firsthand, myself and my family, my parents, with, uh, Marines during a war about 14, 15 years back. We're out on vacation and, and, and the Marines came in to take all the Americans out of that country. And my family and my parents were one of the ones that were taken out of that country in the middle of a war. And, uh, you know, you live in America, every day you don't see Marines every day or Army or whatever unless there's some sort of a parade. But when you're seeing them firsthand in actual combat or putting their lives on the line and what they did with my son, who was, I think, four or five at the time, and, and my two daughters, and my parents, older parents, I mean, these guys gave us their beds to sleep on. They allowed all of our family to eat before them. They were playing with the kids, and these are like 20, 25-year-old Marines playing with a five-year-old and just make, because, you know, you know, they were psychologically messed up from, from being in a war. And since then, man, hats off to, to all military. I mean, I love, love it. So thank you.
Again, you know, thank you so much for doing this. You know, this is, this means a lot today. This is your own time. And you guys are amazing. I remember, like every veterans event, these young students, you know, they, they always volunteer their time, you know, anything like veterans, uh, event, they give up their weekends, you know, their time off to do this. I, I appreciate, I love all of you. You guys are amazing. God bless you all. Thank you.
In case people can't see who this is.
And, uh, that's different. God bless you. So Councilor Chair, also, uh, I want to commend the clerk. Um, I was here to force, force something in the morning, Tuesday, well, it's Wednesday morning.
Yeah.
And the clerk's office did an amazing, amazing job. I tell you what, they were getting ballots. You know, there were people voting at 8:00 PM. They were coming, registering to vote. And you know what? They made sure they stayed, they took care of every resident that came to vote, even when they were late. And the clerk, the deputy clerk and, and her staff were on the floor, sitting on the floor, sorting ballots. And this is like 3:00 something in the morning. And you know what? Never once complained. I asked them so many times, do you guys need anything? Nope. You know, and I want to make sure, as you know, we do, you know, the veterans, or, you know, I mean, all veterans do the same thing. You always stay with your people. You stay with your troops to make sure you're the last person, you know, to make sure they need anything. But you know what? I commend the clerk's office for an amazing job. Never once, never once complained, never once I got a complaint from a resident telling me that there was an issue with the clerk's office. With a smiley face, they helped every resident. Thank you, Ms. Linsenya. Appreciate it.
And I, I called them, I think, either I called them or they called me first thing in the morning. And they were working already, and I'm like, man, don't you people sleep? You know, I knew they were up until about 5:00 in the morning, and then they're already at the office first thing in the morning.
Well, I, I tell you, they didn't, I, I gave them an order and they didn't listen to me. I told them, I said, you guys can take off a few hours in the morning, but nope, they defied my orders and they came here early in the morning on Wednesday. Thank you.
That's right. Thank you. Madam Clerk, come on up.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for acknowledging the efforts of our, of our staff that day. And I couldn't do it without the 150 volunteers and especially for the, our temporary, I told you about, our pit crew before. They're phenomenal. And of course, the staff in our office. Um, yeah, the staff left about 4:15 and the police escorted me downtown and we got back about 5:30. And yeah, we were in the next day. But we could not do it without the service, the service also of our veterans in providing this government the way that we have it. So thank you, um, for everything. And if anyone wants to work the election, you can always call us. We're always looking for, what's that?
Forgive me. For how many times I called?
Yeah. Yeah, I was getting phone calls too. You should see my call log for that day. But I do want to give you just a few. I try to compare the participation in our election process. I know it's, is that better? Okay. What did you say before? Like, yeah. Um, this year's election we had was very, very busy compared to last year. Not as good as presidential. This year, we had 38.86% voters. Okay? We had 17,941 out of our 46,173 registered voters. Last year, we only had an 18.65%. So we did better than last year.
Double.
But not as good as presidential. Presidential was 61.19%. And then in 2019, which was the most comparable, no, not, sorry, 2019 was 14.86. Last gubernatorial was 49.03. So it was busy, busy, busy all day. We had a few bumps in the road. The precincts were very busy, but, um, we did really good. And we appreciate that.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm sorry, Councilor Chair. I just missed, how many registered voters do we have?
Forty-three thousand.
Forty-six thousand.
Forty-six thousand.
Yeah. Um, in, in comparison to 20, 2018, we only had 39,537. So we have quite a few more people of age, I guess, to vote and register to vote. It's pretty darn good.
Wait, can you say that stat one more time?
Last year, or the, in 2018?
No, 2022, how many, what was that percentage? Twenty, 18% you said?
Oh, for, for this year?
Yeah.
Turnout, 38.86. 38.86% turnout.
Percent. And what was last year?
Last year was 18.65.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. That's, sorry, it was local. So, and then in presidential was 61.19% turnout. Like those percentages, huh? And then just a reminder that we do have a meeting next Tuesday, a special meeting. It's closed session only at 5:30.
And she looks amazing, like she's been sleeping all week.
Yeah. 28 hours, I told Councilor Chair, I was up on Tuesday. Yeah. So I'm gonna take the weekend and rest up. We're all gonna take the weekend to rest up, okay? Thank you.
I want to know how great Nadia is.
Thank you. All right. Any, go ahead, Madam Treasurer, go ahead.
Good evening. I'm speaking as your treasurer. Um, first of all, the elections, really great job. We didn't lose power, which was nice during the receiving board. But I want to say to all the candidates, um, thank you for your commitment to putting your name on the ballot. And what I want to encourage you to just stay involved in your community, because everybody makes a difference. Everybody has a piece to that puzzle of success for helping others, and that's why we do what we do. Um, and on that note, veterans, I would be remiss not to say thank you to our veterans. As a military family former, and you know, I, I lost my son through his service ultimately. Let's not forget those that come home, that truly don't always come home. You know what I mean when I say that? Okay? And remember the military families, you guys, um, it's really, anybody that has been through it knows the struggles and challenges, but God bless them for their service, because we wouldn't have government as we do or free elections. Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, all of you. I do want to share with you, Treasure Talk is back, and these are live streams. That is an opportunity for our residents to engage with their treasure. And the first one is gonna be November 16th at 6:00 PM. It's a, a goodie, a no-ty-but-goodie. We've done this a couple times, but it's very popular and very needed, especially with what's going on right now. Families are struggling right now. They're, they're struggling to buy food to put on their table. They're struggling with cost increase, gasoline, whatever it is. A lot of people are hurting. So we are gonna offer a resource fair and tax foreclosure prevention on November 16th through the live stream to make it convenient for people. We want to share, and there is, there's an abundance of resources out there to help families. Keep the lights on, keep you in your home. If you need food, whatever it is, we're gonna help you with that and connect the dots. November 23rd is gonna be Cash Flow 101, but what I want to tell you about this one is it's more of the instructional purpose of it, not diving into the nuts and bolts, but why and how and the purpose of it. December 5th is gonna be, again, these are all 6:00 PM, will be winter tax, breaking it down. So I know you guys don't get as excited as I do about taxes, but, um, we keep adding things to the tax bill to improve it, like itemizing out your millages. That was the first, summer was the first time we did that for you. People loved it. We loved it. It separated the funds automatically. But what I want to tell you I'm excited about, you guys are gonna laugh at me, but we're gonna add a QR code this time. Pretty exciting. But join me on December 5th at 6:00 PM, and we'll talk a little bit more about some of the improvements we're making. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Treasurer. Anybody else from administration have an announcement?
There he is.
Our librarian, go ahead.
Well, hello, Council Chair and Mayor. I just want to talk about a couple of things. First off, I want to thank all our sponsors and trunks that came out for our two trunk or treats. We raised over 2,300 for Goodfellows. Hundreds of families had a great time playing golf at both of our libraries. We gave away pumpkins at JFK. Uh, thanks to the fire department, the police department, maintenance, the women voters, clerk's office, treasurer's office, assessors, CCRC, um, the Annapolis NHS, Crestwood NHS, they gave us a lot of help. Thanks to Carolyn Smith, AJ Wyatt, and Jim Moyer for helping to plan the event. Now the dedicated staff who helped out. I'll be giving a graphic to City Media to show all the sponsors and trunks, because they were so extensive. It's kind of, kind of a long list here. So we had a lot of different businesses sponsor, so I'm really, really thankful to everyone that helped us out, um, and trunks as well. So thank you. And next, our Gingerbread House program signup is now active. Our ever-popular Gingerbread House craft kit will be going on the road again the week of December 12th. A library van will be dropping off kits with instructions and supplies to make small gingerbread houses. All ingredients are halal. The craft kit is designed for both children and teens. Uh, go to website at dhcl.mishlibrary.org and sign up, uh, through December 4th. Uh, that's all for now. Uh, thanks for your time and see you at the library, everyone.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
Councilor Chair.
I have an announcement too. There will be no more meetings this year for the South Dearborn Heights Civic Association. Once near Thanksgiving, Christmas coming, people are busy, they get sick, so we only go, uh, January through October. We will resume again the fourth week on a Thursday, uh, in January. Now, the Ekor's Creek Commission will, however, will be having a meeting on November 23rd, 6:00 PM. It's an election meeting and all are welcome. It's at 3335 South Beach Daily at the admin building of the Westwood Community School District. And since you were recognizing military people, my father and one of his brothers served in World War II. His other brother was in Korea. Uh, my brother was in Vietnam. Uh, my grandson's currently in Rotsie, and my trace grandfather's all the way back to the Civil War. So we've done it too.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Okay. With no, uh, there's one more announcement. We have our recreation director, Kimberly Laurencel. Uh, go ahead, please. On Zoom. No, it's Kimmy next.
Hi. I just want to remind everybody that Tuesday, December 6th, we've got our tree lighting ceremony taking place, uh, starts at 6:30 PM with the Crestwood Jazz Band. And, uh, then we have Santa welcoming in with, uh, all types of activities for the kids. We've got letters to Santa, Christmas caroling, cookie decorating, hot chocolate, uh, lots lots of free activities for the kids. And it's going to be a change of location this year. It's at the Canfield.
Wait, Director, can you repeat that? It's at the Canfield and you got cut off.
Yep, it's at the Canfield Community Center this year from 6:30 to 8:30 PM. And we're hoping to see all of you there. The officials will have again up on the Showmobile and you'll help us welcome Santa in and another fun evening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Director. Next up is Director Hassan Jamal. Go ahead, sir.
Good afternoon, good evening.
Evening.
For announcement, the first one is the City of Dearborn Heights Community and Economic Development hosted in partnership with HOD National to vaccine at the Dearborn Center. They were proportionally very successful. We had 18 vaccination and numerous testing. The next two of them will be in the South End. Supposedly, we are still trying to find out where, but most likely will be Young Center, Richard Young Center, or any other ones. Dearborn Heights was in the national HOD news. I can share with you that. So, we are national right now with HOD. So, they were very happy that we were, with the help of the vaccine team that includes the mayor, who was able to accrue facilitate the mayor's office, Chief of Staff, and the Secretary, the mayor's secretary. Don't forget also Anka, Mr. Bob Anka, and the team of the Dearborn Center, manager Patty and others. I just want to include everybody like you do. So, I just want to mimic what you do.
Okay.
Now, the announcement, number two announcement will be that the first grant of FEMA, which was initiated back in 2016, was successfully done. It was nine homes being acquired, demolished. We were able to relieve, with your help, nine families from the misery of flooding. It was voluntarily, and they volunteered, they want to leave and start somewhere. I didn't like that, but that's what they like to do.
Uncle.
Now, the new, the new grant coming New Year, that's another wave of grant. I understand that, I understand that, you know, the council spent, I timed you, 25 minutes talking. Now, I'm talking about benefits for the city, so please give me a few seconds. So, this particular new FEMA grant, a wave, is coming next year. It will be on batches of six or seven homes each. The aim is not to acquire and demolish homes. The aim is to resolve the Ecorse Creek by giving people hope, by cleaning the creek as soon as we can with the grant from the state. So, we encourage people not to sell, to stay.
Okay. Thank you, Director. Appreciate it. Director, there's nobody else?
Councilor Chair.
Yes, Councilor. I'm sorry, Madam Clerk.
I forgot a few people if I can mention.
You forgot what? I'm sorry.
I forgot a few people.
Okay, go ahead.
I just, really quick, I know all of our election workers, but I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge our Building Maintenance Department for all the hard work they did in delivering equipment, setting up the equipment, moving tables, picking up the equipment, as well as our Police Department for providing the security in the morning and after, taking downtown. Our building hosts, our different school districts, Crestwood, District 7, Westwood, Parks and Rec for all the, giving up their space for the day, St. Sabina, the library who hosts two different locations. And as well as Nikki in our Comptroller's Office for getting out our workers' checks right away. And if I miss anybody, I apologize. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. First of all, congratulations, Nadia. She has to be first. She'd like during public comments, so come on up. Okay, come on up with her.
Okay, Nadia Nasser, McKinley Street, Dearborn Heights. This message is, I know I'm supposed to address you guys, but this message is for our mayor. I took a little time to write something, so I'm going to go ahead with that. Mayor Bazey, you are a man of honor, integrity, and service. You have given back to us as students, residents of Dearborn Heights, and citizens of the United States of America as you fought for our freedom and continue to advocate for our city. Not only do you volunteer with us, but you keep us connected and engaged. You always make yourself available when it comes down to our personal growth as students and volunteers. Through your Masters in Aerospace Engineering and through your careers at Boeing and Ford Motor Company, you continue to inspire us to pursue our educational goals, career interests, and even in the face of adversity. You write our letters of recommendation even if we ask the night before its due, and you introduce us to prominent people in our communities that can help us with our career development in addition to always participating in our events and in our lives. In difficult times such as COVID, you demonstrated leadership by engaging students in a safe environment where we were able to help others in our community. You provided us with your time, compassion, wisdom, and even gave resources to those in need. Because of who you are and what you've done, we feel safe, protected, and appreciated in your presence. On behalf of the students, you have always been there for us no matter the time of day. Thank you for being our mayor, mentor, and favorite Marine. Thank you for your sacrifice, your bravery, and the example you set for all of us. Being presented to you now, being presented to you now is a token of appreciation created by us. We compiled some of our favorite memories with you as our mentor and role model and role model. Food drives, holiday events, Marine Corps challenges, graduation, and prom are just some of the things that we have included. We request that this is displayed in City Hall. So, every morning when you walk in, you are reminded that we are rooting for you and we appreciate all that you've done and that you continue to do for us as students, residents of Dearborn Heights, and citizens of the United States of America. Thank you, Mayor Bazey.
Thank you. It's okay. Put it right here. Step over there with them, right in front of them. Take that with you.
Yeah.
I'm the impromptu cameraman now. Thank you so much.
Put it in front of the podium.
And then we want you to open this as well.
Oh, my God. Is it going to be an embarrassing something?
No, no. It's something that-
I'm going to disappear because he's always calling me out on stuff over there. I know, but I still love you.
I did put it in there either.
That's beautiful. This is beautiful. Congratulations. I love all of you. Thank you so much. I really appreciate this.
Of course.
Look forward.
This is too much. Mary, I look forward.
It's not enough. It's really not enough.
I'm going to proudly display this in my office.
And this.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
So, that concludes my public comment, but there's a few of them that have a public comment, if that's okay?
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, you want to take a picture real quick?
Take a picture.
Okay, everyone, like, crowd in. I don't want to, everybody in.
You covered Arlie.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Nadia. Ladies and gentlemen. All right, so whoever's going to make a comment next, congratulations, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for your service.
Set it up there.
Please state your name, city, street, and you have three minutes.
Okay. Hi, guys. My name is Tomasia Solomon. I live on Roosevelt Boulevard and I live in Dearborn Heights. So, this goes out to Billy Boy, Mr. Bill Bazey. When I met Bill Bazey two years ago, I knew he was going to make a positive change for Dearborn Heights. Bill is a hardworking, funny, intelligent man. He is not only a mentor, but he is a friend. He has written me many recommendation letters to win awards and get into prestigious programs. He has helped out Key Club, different class student councils, and many others. Thank you for, thank you for being true to me and many others. Lastly, Bill, thank you for your service. We love you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Cameron Poissons. I live on 4500 McKinley Street in Dearborn Heights. I am the Student Council President of Classes 2025 at Annapolis High School. I would just like to give a huge thank you to Mayor Bill Bazey on the behalf of our class and myself. Mayor Bazey has shown several acts of generosity to our class. He's participated in our Pride Week Dance at a school assembly. He's wrapped several of our class T-shirts. He's made several generous donations to our class, and he's helped us organize car washes and fundraisers. You have been such an admirable mentor to all of us, truly. And we cannot thank you enough for your generosity, kindness, dedication, and your service. So, thank you so much.
My name is Renee and I live in Rosalie Street in Dearborn. I'm here tonight because I had a, I interviewed Mayor Bazey on our show, Quanti Talk. I already knew what a great man he was. He's a part of Kiwanis, and working with him and all the food drives and all the trunk or treats with the kids in the community touched my heart and it touches Kiwanis. As you can see, a lot of our key clubs are here tonight because of what Mayor Bazey has done over the years, supporting the community and the kids. And I just want to say through all the years that you were deployed, you left your family, you left your company several times to continue to go back and be deployed and give us our freedom. And I can't thank you enough for all that you have done.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else for public comments? You have three minutes. Come on up, sir. Please state your name, city, street.
My name's Phil Smith. I live on Cornell Street. And what else do you want?
In Dearborn Heights.
Dearborn Heights. All right, here today, we have a group of people. I guess I'm the spokesperson on this. I'm sorry? Well, they're going to talk after me, so it's, I'll be a long night, okay? I'm here on behalf of my grandson that was obviously killed on October 14th by a hit and run. You know, we've done a candlelight, we've done many things. We have heard nothing from the Chief of Police other than it's in progress or it's in-
Investigation.
Investigation, okay? We've heard nothing from the City Council. You've just told me that you're going to do a study on speed bumps and flashing speed signs. That should have been done 20 years ago. The people asked for it 20 years ago. It's a new regime now. I know that. It's fallen on your shoulders. You need to get something done. Not a study. It needs to be done. Detroit can do it, a speed bump and flashing lights. Dearborn does it. The people asked for it. They got it done. Why can't you guys do this? Just get it done.
It shouldn't have taken a death of a child. Mine specifically. For this to happen. I'm not happy. I want something done.
There is a petition going on right now, and it's almost completed. There's 37, over 3,700 names have been signed up for that petition for Joey's law. We request, or demand, you might say, that this City Council and this mayor knows something about it. It doesn't take a brainchild to make it do that, okay? It doesn't take a study. Make it happen. That's all I have to say. Other than I did have an announcement of Toys for Tots is around, which is a good thing for the people or the children, okay? It's already started. We're out there roaming around right now, dropping all boxes, so.
Thank you, sir, and God, may he rest in peace. Thank you.
Councilor Chair.
Just one quick, he wants me to quick.
Yeah, real quick, maybe we can ask the Corporation Council to draft, maybe even have some type of study session to see what it takes to get speed bumps.
It's in the process.
Okay, perfect. Or then maybe we can tell them that's in the process.
Yes, I did mention to the grandpa earlier.
Hi, my name is Ashley. I live on Hip Street in Dearborn Heights. And I live at the, my block dead ends at the end of the school. I cannot tell you how many children I have almost watched getting hit, including my own at that corner, including when there is police presence and crossing guard presence because Margaret here was a crossing guard previously. I understand that you guys have a lot of red tape for better language to get through in order to use something, but there has to be something short term in the meantime because it is pitch black at these corners. My street is lighter than the street that Joey got hit on, and that's not okay. Like, that's, our children need to be safe, especially with how dark it is when they get there in the morning and sometimes even when they leave school if they're doing sports. Allen Park has a similar issue, but I know they're in progress of actually getting into there. I pulled my daughter out of D-7 because of the danger of those corners and the lack of education that she was getting. And ultimately, I would like her to go back. But the way this city is going right now with our schooling and some of the programs that we're still trying to build, I don't feel comfortable. She was bored. But ultimately, our children's safety is of utmost importance, and something short term has to be done about this. Thank you.
Just, you know, I didn't want to announce this today, but there is, but because everybody's here, I might as well say it. There is a study session being put together with all the interested parties from within the city to study putting in, you know, speed bumps, the lights, the flashlights. I spoke with you about it earlier. That's going to be scheduled. All the council members will be there. It will be open to the public. We will hear all sides, and then from there, myself and Councilman Baydun have been speaking about this, we'll be putting together a resolution, if it makes sense, of course, to go ahead and move this thing forward. So, something is definitely in the works.
Is there nothing that can be done in the meantime? Because when I'm telling you it's pitch black, it's dark. We've been doing some research, and I know, I'm going to let her, she's done all the research, so I'm going to let her explain. But ultimately, if we could do something short term, even if it's something as simple as flashers attached to the stop signs we already have or increase the police presence, if that's an option, something to protect our kids just a little bit more until we can finalize a solution for this. It would greatly appreciate it.
We'll go ahead and listen. And just as an FYI, all parties within the city, obviously, either on Zoom or in person. So, go ahead, ma'am.
So, I'm going to start her time new. Can she just?
Yeah, just for you, Todd, correct.
Okay, my name is Margaret King and I live on Mayfair Street. I've been in the city and I've been a part of the city for over 30 years now. I was a crossing guard and I crossed at Hip and Eaton, right there, as a crossing guard. I've crossed Joey for many, many years. It is dark. There are crosswalks go. There's white lines. I've asked several times for them to get painted and they did not. And also too, if, like Ashley had said, if we can get reflectors, solar lights, something to be done, I have footage on my phone of me driving down these streets and it's completely black. Even with a child riding on a bike on the sidewalk, out of my peripheral, I could not see him. Something has to be done. These are our children. This is the future of Dearborn Heights. Let's see something done now. Should have not lost a life. I can't believe it's taken this long. It's ridiculous. That's all I have to say. I just, I can't imagine. I just, it makes me very upset with the city. But that's all I have to say, and thank you.
I understand. Thank you so much. Can, I just want just a quick, just a little moment of silence for little Joey, please.
I want to say something. I'm the grandmother. And I want to know why 10 years ago, it was reported that it was tried to get speed bumped. Why not then? Maybe my grandson would still be alive. Shake your heads.
Can we have a moment of silence, please? Thank you. Anybody else with a public comment?
My name is Mike Blackburn, Arnold Street, Dearborn Heights. First thing I want to say is-
Mike, I'm sorry, I'm going to interrupt you. Like, I always do, not for you, but just, are you speaking as a city resident or as an official of the city?
As a resident.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
First thing I want to say is Happy Veterans Day to everybody out there, especially my dad, Jim Blackburn, Mr. Mayor, Phil Smith. Happy Veterans Day to everybody listening and not listening, who's ever out there. I wasn't going to speak today, but being with these kids here and with what's going on with the Smith family, my heart goes out to you. Kids, if you're in a car, whether you're driving or not driving, if you're not driving and somebody you're with is speeding, say something to them. You kids now have to change what's been going on. I can't tell you how many times I was cutting my grass, cleaning up in front of my house, and car is going down 50 miles an hour, my back turned and I almost get hit. It's happening. It's getting worse. Every day it's getting worse. We need help. Us as residents are poor. Everybody needs to pay attention as to their speed. And especially you kids, you need to, if you see something wrong, please speak up so something like this does not happen again. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Anybody else with a public comment?
They're waiting for you.
Go on, they're waiting for you, buddy.
Be quick. Abraham Devaja, Kenmore Street, Dearborn Heights, Michigan. I'm going to keep this very brief. Obviously, there's been a lot of drama going on with this new car wash development on Ford Road. They're airing a special about it today on the news. When you guys get off, you guys could probably watch it. More so, us, this residents, we're obviously concerned about special land use permits. This new development that was approved by Planning Commission to put a car wash on Ford Road and Gully, I know Councilman Baydun, Councilman Muscat have done quite a bit of work about putting a light in front of the firehouse. But this new car wash approval, which obviously, most if not all the residents in the area are against, would circumvent about, on a busy day, about 400 to 600 cars through the side streets of the residence. And this is no left turn on Ford Road toward Beach, right turn only. You know, I'm not sure exactly how many people follow traffic rules in Dearborn Heights. Obviously, my heart goes out to the Smith family. No one is going to go right on Ford Road all the way down to make a turn to go back on Beach. They're going to make it right on Ford Road, right down the residence. And it's going to be very dangerous for everyone in that area. So, that being said, I'd like to propose something. I'd like the special land use, like other cities in the area, to go in front of council for final approval. And again, I've spoken to a number of council people, and overwhelming majority of them have said that they, Councilman Abdullah didn't tell me how he's going to vote, but he said he would at least bring it apart. And I know a bunch of other council people have already given their approval. You know, things like gentleman's clubs, pharmaceutical facilities, that stuff can all be approved without our elected officials. And we find that highly concerning. The Planning Commission should be a biased, independent division of the city. It's not. should be a biased, independent division of the city. It's not. Might get into many details. If you guys wanna ask me why that it's not, we can discuss that later, but our elected officials should be the ones to make the final say about special land uses and sort of stop this fiasco going on. This car wash has cost the residents about $100,000 in lawyer fees just fighting it, and it's still gonna happen, which is extremely unfortunate. So can I get a pledge maybe from Councilman Abdullah to at least let the lawyer look into making ordinance to protect the citizens from this unnecessary traffic going through our residents' sidewalks or residential areas?
Okay. I can tell you, it was discussed a while back. As a matter of fact, Madam Clerk, when we were on Riverside, if I'm not mistaken, remember?
Yeah, we were on Riverside.
There was a discussion about that. I will have that looked into again.
If you'd like, I can tell you what happened, Mr. DeBajah.
I'd love to know what happened. I've reached out to corporate, and no one's gone back to you.
The former city corporation council, Mr. Miyake at the time, told us that, one, it wasn't legally allowed to happen, and that we would be here at every council meeting, making decisions. We would be staying here till 2:00 or 3:00 AM. Now, I don't know how accurate this is, but I'm just sharing you with the information as to what was brought in front of us.
So take too much council's time to look into it? Because I know other cities, Sterling Heights, all major cities have our elected representatives, i.e. you guys, making that final decision. It's not a planning commission issue. Those are appointed representatives that have nothing to do with, they don't have the background to even go into all this. I mean, we got like a pharmacist who knew the developer, who had a connection with this guy. There is no background for them. You guys have seats to lose. We don't like what you guys have to say. We'll vote you guys out. But they come in and go like weeks, and then they're gone. You know, same thing with the corporate council. You know, they've had three attorneys on their planning commission the last two weeks or couple months because they can't get their story straight. So I know major cities in the country, in the state of Michigan, have city council approval. And special land use is not a every single day thing. I mean, I'm not sure how many gentleman's clubs or car washes or special land uses come.
Time's up.
Okay, time's up, time's up. Okay. So we're gonna have corporate council look into it for us and see if the legality is because other cities have the same thing.
Okay. Everything's gotta go through the council chair, but I will look into it again.
Beautiful. Okay. Thank you.
Well, tomorrow's Veterans Day. Happy Veterans Day.
Thank you.
It's good to be in a country where you have your freedom to talk.
Can I interrupt you for a sec? Name, street?
I'm gonna get to that.
And Dearborn Heights.
I know how it works. My name's Bob Davis, better known as Red. Live on 25676 Lockloman. There's only 20 houses on our street. And I'm just gonna bring up this problem that I'm having with a neighbor, new neighbor that moved from Dearborn, came in, and he's parking a commercial truck. First, he tried to do it on the street. I told him, you can't do that. Can't even park it on the driveway. His attitude was like, you know, I could, I don't care. I said, oh, no problem. You know, I'm just letting you know, something could happen to you. And I told him, and he already knows. He leaves at 5:30 in the morning, and he comes in at 5:30, 6:00 in the evening, and four ordinance might have to come out and catch him doing it. Well, ordinance goes home at 4:00. And also, they're leaving garbage outside. Our garbage, our garbage pickup's on Tuesday, and if you come by and you got the ordinance officer, you'll see a pile of garbage on the street. And it's there now. Now, maybe he thinks he's got a lot of money. Let's find him. Let's get him a ticket. And besides that, you have to be aware of your surroundings. Dearborn Heights is a very good town. I've been in Dearborn Heights, my wife and I, Deb, for 35 years. I'm heading to the stretch now. I appreciate your time. Thank you very much for listening to me. I don't like to come here with complaints all the time, and I don't, but we have a good city, and for citizens to be involved, say something. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
Anybody else in the audience that would like to go ahead? Come on up.
I'm not gonna start the clock. You have unlimited time.
No, that's okay. We follow the rules. Thank you, though. I just have a couple points to make. First of all, of course, Happy Veterans Day to all the veterans and all the families.
Name and suit.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I know who you are, but-
Nadia Fidel Bazey, 739 Kenlock. Okay.
Okay. In Dearborn Heights.
Oh, everyone knows where we live. Again, Happy Veterans Day, of course, you know. I'm Mayor Bill Bazey's wife, and I definitely am dumbfounded. I almost passed out when I saw you all. They called me. I was at work, Renee and Nadia, and they said you have to come to the council meeting right away. So I came in, and they looked a little suspicious sitting there, but I was really taken back, and I appreciate all your efforts. And specifically, I appreciate you highlighting that being a veteran and continuing to serve after your years of serving our country is so important. So I appreciate, of course, Bill and Phil, who are very good friends. Bill actually has known Phil Smith for many years, long before we've met, and he's actually, Bill considers him a brother. They're both Marines, of course, brothers in arms, but their relationship goes way back. And we also know Katie, and my heart goes out to the family as well. And for that reason, we are pulling together as a community to put together a fundraising dinner on Tuesday at 6:00 PM at the Royalty Manor. The information is available online on Facebook, and please RSVP your attendance if you will be participating. But we really wanna continue to pull together as a community and support one of our own, and of course, one of Bill's own Marines. So thank you all. Appreciate your time.
Behind Burger King on Warren. Thank you, Nadia. Anybody else in the audience has a public comment?
Council chair?
Wait, hold on. We gotta go Zoom first. Anybody on Zoom that has a public comment? Okay. Is there somebody, Madam Clerk?
Yes, looks like Dana, Mr. Parish.
Dana, go ahead. You have three minutes. Street, name?
Good evening. Sorry about that. I had to get my video up. Dana Parish, Grinny Creek Street, Dearborn Heights. Happy Veterans Day to everyone. Thank you for your service, and those who are in service now. Thank you for your continued service and those who have served. I just wanted to piggyback off something that Mr. Blackburn said, but it's not just spears. It's those inattentive drivers, drunk drivers operating well, intoxicated, drugs, marijuana, those kinds of things, and texting and driving. That's a big one. People are here. See Parish swerving all over the place. The other thing I wanted to address is if we have a representative that deals with DTE, and this goes along with one of the resolutions of the city passed regarding the trees, they cut the trees or they trim the trees back, but after a couple of years, two or three years, those trees have grown back into the wires again. And unfortunately, you know, we have the same problems again. You need to get high winds over this past weekend, and somebody in Dearborn Heights lost their garage because a wire was knocked down by high winds. It hit a tree limb that took the wire down and burned the garage down. This is ridiculous. We pay, as taxpayers, we pay for maintenance for those power lines, and that includes them trimming the tree limbs. They've gotta do it right. I've had, I had a company come out, I won't say their name, but they're one of the ones who works for DTE, and I had them trim a neighbor's this city and so forth. And they came and trimmed this contractor, trimmed the tree, and guess what they didn't do? They didn't trim the tree, thanks, thanks, Ms. Beadon. They didn't trim the tree, they didn't trim the limb that was right over the service line coming to my house. They trimmed everything else but the line, the limb that was over the service line. So, please, I'm there with them responsibly trimming those winds back so our residents don't end up without power. It's ridiculous. I've got a whole house generator. I'm speaking for everyone else in the city. So thank you very much, and God bless everyone. Have a good evening. And let's take a quick break here.
Okay. Thank you, Dana. Anybody else on Zoom? Seeing none?
Council chair?
Councilman Bedu?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Councilman Bedu, seconded by Councilman Ahmad. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carried. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Good night.